We are a full board this evening. I mean, that for thirty minutes in executive session prior to the meeting to chart the hours personnel. And are during their announcements. Our first item is the Lackawanna College proposal.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I distributed some folders onto your media. So new folder. Add us a lot of information regarding Lackawanna College and our program. I'm here to talk about our pre-college program, and that is dual enrollment in high school. Dual enrollment at ten years, a Lackawanna college location, or dual enrollment taking online versus three different ways that we can offer a program. Our program is pretty, uh, pretty aggressive in its pricing. We offer a hundred dollars per credit. It's pretty robust as well. Right now, we have agreements with seven, last time it last, yesterday I counted, with seventy-nine schools. And that's from northeastern Pennsylvania down here to central Pennsylvania, and we're even going down toward Tarresburg. Uh, we have an agreement with the school in Philadelphia, and an agreement with two schools in Pittsburgh. So we are traveling across the state with that program. Uh, the folder shows some, you know, some fancy information anybody can put and have it go get printed, make it look nice. Um, but the, the real information is what I'm gonna share with you. Um, so I, I met with the Lewisburg administration a couple, a couple weeks ago. We're talking about this, and uh, thought it'd be a good idea for me to come talk to, just no word about it. But what I really wanted to talk to you is about some real numbers. Uh, so I just wanted to talk about neighboring school district. Not gonna mention them by name. Uh, but I just wanna give you some numbers of where we are with government funding. Um, roughly ten schools within fifteen to twenty mile radius of Lewisburg. Uh, total, last year, we don't have this year's number yet, because we're still working on it. Last year, uh, we serviced two hundred seventy-one students. Oh, uh, with that, of those two hundred seventy-one students, they took three thousand five hundred ninety-nine credits. Almost four thousand. Uh, when we take a look at uh, how many, how many students the college in overall services last year was over twenty-four hundred students, and we're expecting to eclipse that this year. Uh, so, so we talk about students, and we talk about credits, that's great. What does that mean? Well, here's what that means. You take those students and average it out between credits, um, each student took an average of thirteen credits. A little less, a little more depending on the student, but it's an average of thirteen credits. For our program, that would be thirteen hundred dollars for a student or family. That's a semester of college for a student or family. When you talk about what a semester of college costs, it could be anywhere from a few thousand to a couple of tens of thousands. Of savings. And this is not tuition. Because students also have to live on campus, and they have to eat college food. A lot of times, they don't eat college food, so that's wasted money. I learned that the hard way, my daughter signed up for the most expensive plan when she went to college. Because we also got her two bins of food that's seven or a bit. So, uh, so we talked about that. So, but I'm gonna compare what not what other college costs, let's compare what Lackawanna College costs. A typical full-time tuition semester for Lackawanna College is right around ninety-two hundred dollars. Pretty affordable. Um, and when we take a look at what a student doing dual enrollment does is thirteen hundred dollars, a pretty good savings. So just savings through Lackawanna, if a student come to Lackawanna College. That was a total of, uh, with all those students, two hundred seventy-one students. Through dual enrollment, they would've spent three hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. If they came to Lackawanna College. For all those students who were, who became a full-time student at Lackawanna College, it would've been ninety-two hundred dollars. And two point five million. That's an eighty percent, eighty-six percent savings. That's two point one four something something savings. In comparison to what a student could do. So when I come and I talk about this program, you might be surprised when I tell you, I go and talk to numerous schools throughout the area and throughout the state. And uh, some schools don't participate. I'll give you one example. I went to a school, uh, talked to them in January. Large group of students. Went to them in the end of February, very beginning of March, smaller group of students. Then went to their cafeteria and sat there during lunch. And the school was nice enough to give me a microphone and let me talk during lunch. Every time I went to that school, I told them that we had scholarship money for those students to get free college credits. In that school, we've had five students sign up. Now, some people may think, well, it's Lackawanna College. Lackawanna College is a private nonprofit college, same as Bucknell, same as Susquehanna, but they're not a community college. We're accredited by the same crediting body that those two other schools are accredited by as well, our credits transfer. When we talk to students about transferability, all your school. You wanna go in and be a doctor, I'll take an accounting class. You wanna be in criminal justice, I'll take an anatomy class. But what we're talking about is how we can help students of Lewisburg get a little bit further ahead than what they're already gonna be. And we can do that through this program. And I have so many different examples, I could talk and ramble all night, but I know you guys have business to get to, so I'm only gonna give you two. First one, those students at a local school district, again, not gonna mention names. They started in the second half of their sophomore year, taking online classes and classes after high school. They are graduating this spring. From Lackawanna College in Manhattan. In June, they're gonna walk across their high school stage and graduate from high school. So they're graduating from Lackawanna College before they graduate from high school. Because of this program. I'm gonna give you a second example, my daughter. And I can talk about this one specifically because I know exactly what she wanted to do. My daughter, uh, participated in the program. She did it three different ways, at the high school, sat in class, online. And because of proximity, she was able to drive down to the location in Sunbury in the second half of her school day and take some classes then. She accumulated thirty credits before she graduated from high school. When she graduated from high school, she had no idea what she wanted to do. I said, that is perfect. Because I don't want you going somewhere and waiting for twenty, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars to find out, I don't wanna do that. Because there is a very high rate of students who either change their mind or really think about changing their mind in their first year of college. And by that time, they're thirty thousand dollars behind. Hopefully, it's only that enough. So she came to Lackawanna College and completed her professional studies degree, associate's degree. That's all your geneds. She completed that, and then decided in that time, she dabbled in a couple classes. She put some electives, decided she wanted to go to market. She applied to Bloomsburg, got into Commonwealth, got into Commonwealth. They accepted all her credits. So she completed a bachelor's degree, is gonna be graduating this spring. She completed a bachelor's degree in three years instead of four. And you think, well, tuition's not that expensive at Bloomsburg. Okay, I get that. Gotta live there, gotta eat there. Might as well double whatever tuition is, if not more. Because she also lived in the most affected dorm. So why I talk to you about this is because of how valuable I know this program is, and how much money this can save, not just families. But my daughter is gonna have such a head start when she gets out of college, as compared to somebody she graduated with. Who was paying for another year of tuition, another year of dorms, and another year of dining. So that is my examples of how this can help. Any student at Lewisburg, really. If it's one class where they get to take an online class through us. They think, I might like criminal justice. And they take an online class, ooh, I don't like criminal justice. At least it was three hundred dollars wasted. Instead of thirty thousand. So that's why I'm here. Does anybody have any questions?
What's the breakdown of online versus in-person in school versus driving to one of the campuses?
Oh, I had that number. Um, what I can tell you is we have a very robust offering of online classes every semester. Uh, we usually send out a list to schools, and we, so we have two, we're a semester-based school, Paul and Spring. Within each semester, we have two sessions. We have a session in the beginning of the semester, and a session in the second half. We have students who take two classes a semester, one beginning, one in the second half. Two and two, three and three. Um, the amount of classes that are offered are more than one hundred level classes, geneds. Um, but we usually send out anywhere from twenty-five to forty, forty-five different classes that students can sign up for online.
Do you have summer offerings as well?
We do have summer offerings. This same rate applies to summer classes as well. Um, the only time it doesn't is if they are in their senior year and finishing, they then go into the off-aid period.
Does Lewisburg have to offer any dual enrollment in order for the students to get the hundred dollars per credit deal?
So they do not have to offer anything at the high school. However, the agreement is something that has to be in place for the student to get the deal.
Any questions? Any questions from over on the, no? Okay.
And they can do this prior to their senior year?
So we, we want students to really focus on their junior and senior year. Um, but we have had students who are very, uh, they really wanna get stuff done. We tell them, you can start your sophomore year, but we prefer the second half of your sophomore year. Because there are a lot of things going on, students really don't know what it is they wanna do, and we try to start them off with the ones we know are gonna transfer, the history of psychology, sociology, uh, college writing, those things are very easily transferable, no matter what your major is. Once they advance and they get an idea of what it is they wanna do, maybe they wanna take some business classes, maybe they wanna take some accounting, maybe some human services classes. Junior, senior, that's when we guess it can get more specific. But they can also start as late as they want. I had students who were just starting the second half of their senior year. And because of our online offerings, I think they've done three classes in the first half, three classes in the second half, that's a semester. And they're still saving some time and money.
So can you speak to the classes that would happen in the, in the school?
Sure. So what we would do is we would work with administration and the high school, um, to identify classes that most, uh, they, they had, were a match. And what we take a look at is we take a look at the description of the class, the objectives of the class. Uh, how their, the assessments are performed in the class. Uh, and what happens is, uh, we'll say that's a match, I'll use, uh,
Sociology?
Sociology. Okay, so we have a sociology teacher at Lewisburg who has a good curriculum put together. So we'll say your sociology class is equivalent to our sociology class. What'll happen is a student will apply and sign up for that class through us. And then at the end of that class, we'll send the grade sheet to the instructor. And have them put on, we do letter grades, we don't do number grades, uh, a letter grade, A minus, B plus, whatever it is. And then we'll add that to our system. Student can then get a transcript from us that says Lackawanna College. Uh, intro to sociology, Jimmy Jones. And you can take that and use that at another school, or a different school. If they decide to come to us, any money that they invest in the program, they get back in the scholarship. So if they invest fifteen hundred dollars for fifteen credits, they get back that back in the form of a scholarship towards, uh, their education at Lackawanna College. Thank you.
And just, so in that case, though, could students take that class but not get the dual enrollment?
Yes, it's not required. Um, be, there is a law. So we understand, you know, things, maybe parents can't afford it, student can't, whatever that may be. Um, so we don't wanna impact anybody else who's in the class, and it's the teacher's class. We don't ask them to do anything with our curriculum. We may say, if there's things in it that we wanna see, say, hey, could you add these two objectives? We may do that. Uh, but we don't say, teach our class, take our test, use our book. It's Lewisburg information. It's very, we, we don't get too much into the weeds, but we obviously want things done correctly. And we wanna make sure that the class is gonna cover all the material that we expect. We'll make suggestions, but that's it.
Any questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
To our budget updates.
All right. Talk about the budget update and where we are as of today, April tenth. Um, then go into, uh, some possible scenarios, first online, with different factors. So just a reminder, uh, where we started with our preliminary budget. It started with revenues of forty-four million six ninety-five. Uh, this includes that three percent, uh, tax increase that we spoke about before. Um, and then expenses of forty-four million nine oh six. Uh, and that, that total includes those, uh, two factors that I spoke of, the five hundred thousand dollar transfer to, uh, capital projects and some of the, uh, new staff additions. Which left us a deficit of, uh, two hundred eleven thousand. So. So since the last, uh, budget meeting, we had a few updates. We'll start with, uh, some of the good updates, which were, uh, personal updates that lowered our expenses by about thirty-three thousand. Um, we are working to move some things around with our building. Um, trying to identify, um, uh, annual trips and certain supplies or equipment that we could run. Sort of move over to G D F, uh, and have some help with that there. So we added the fifty thousand for that to our revenue. And then, um, we also got an update to our basic education funding from the state, which increased, uh, our B F by fifty-one thousand. Uh, that brings us to six million four, four hundred seventy-one thousand for our basic ed funding. Uh, we also got an update to our rate at Learn Block Grant, which that increased by a hundred and three thousand seven thirty-four. Um, so that was all the good things. Not so good increase to our special education funding. For this recent update, it reduced it by twenty-four thousand, uh, seven thirty-seven. After speaking with our insurance rep for general, our general liability. It's looking like through C M Regent, we're going to expect about a twelve percent increase, uh, to our general liability insurance. That is, after going out and looking, we are comparing to other companies, and they do seem to be the best right now. We don't have a final price increase from them, but after looking at a few other companies, um, for example, Utica was twenty, about twenty-two thou, twenty-two percent increase. And Erie Insurance was about a twenty-five percent increase. So it does look like we will have the best, um, right there, the C M Regent at the twelve percent. So that ended up being, uh, thirty-five thousand, uh, increase to our liability insurance. And then, uh, electricity had to add forty-five thousand for, across all buildings due to, um, new capacity charge increases that are gonna start June first. Um, this is part of the billing for electricity that is variable, uh, it's not part of our contract fixed price. So it can change year to year, and the, uh, increase from, uh, the uh, basically the groom that sets our capacity for the capacity charge for the state, they agreed on an increase of, it was eight hundred, eight hundred and thirty-three percent increase uh, for capacity for starting June, uh, June first. But that ends up all, all being about, uh, uh, twenty percent increase to our overall, uh, electricity. So, uh, forty-five thousand to our electricity, and then the natural gas, uh, Lintown increases just from our, our new contract. Uh, at Lintown. So that brings our new deficit to eighty-six thousand one fifty-seven.
So.
Can I just ask a question? The liability insurance, was that anything related to us, or was that just a general pool increase of?
It's the market, yeah. Yeah, not, not to do with us. Um, our, we've had pretty good claims for a while, so, uh, yeah, I think we, we get pretty good rates, and so it was more to do with the general market than, than us, yeah, in particular. So we can talk about a few, um, variables, like I said before, where we can close that, uh, eighty-six thousand dollar deficit. Um, or we can look at our capital projects transfer and some of the new, uh, staff that we are requesting. Uh, but first, I wanted to take a quick look at, uh, our historical tax increases, just to, um, have that as perspective and have it fresh in our minds, uh, here, the last twenty twenty-one, we had that zero percent increase that was COVID, so it's kinda hard to use that as a reference, but, um, twenty-one, twenty-two, two point nine four percent. Uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, two point seven five, and then the last two year, two years here, uh, prior years, three point five, and then this year, also a three point five percent increase. So I put together, uh, two different slides of, um, scenarios that we can look at for tax increases. Uh, this first slide here, uh, includes the three additional, uh, staff that we were looking to add. And then, uh, we use the capital projects transfer as the, uh, variable that we can change. So option one would be the full five hundred thousand transfer that we tried to do to capital projects. This would give us, uh, three point four percent increase, tax increase. Um, option B would be four hundred thousand at a two point nine five percent increase. Option C, three hundred thousand capital projects transfer at two point four five percent. And then, uh, if we wanted to go with just two hundred capital projects transfer, uh, we would be looking at one point nine seven percent tax increase.
Can I ask a new guy a question? The capital project transfer is going which direction, is going from what to what?
From our general fund to the capital project, so that we have it. It's like building up a savings account for future capital expenses, so that when something happens like a roof, we have the money.
So the more money we're putting away.
Like what we're putting into savings.
Okay.
Right. The first, we could balance it right now at three percent. It was made a four hundred and ten thousand dollar transfer, because we're approximately ninety thousand off, or four fifteen, because we're eighty-five off. Right. So at three percent, instead of transferring five hundred thousand, we transferred four hundred and fifteen.
We was out, correct, yep. Yeah, so it just, in, in the budget, it's an expense going out because it's leaving our general fund, not expenses. Thank you. Uh, and then for these options, it would be all of these, if we didn't wanna touch the five hundred thousand dollar transfer, and we wanted to make the variable, the additional staff. Um, option A, same increase, because it's five hundred thousand and all three additional staff at three point four percent. Um, we're just looking to add two staff members, it would be two point eight five percent. With just one additional staff, it'd be two point three percent. And then if we weren't to add any, it would be one point eight five percent. Uh, next slide. So just some additional considerations, um, when we're thinking about these scenarios. Um, like always, in the past, we have the factor of not knowing what our final basic education funding number's going to be. Uh, in the past, twenty twenty-one, we, the, we came in under what we budgeted, um, the past few years, twenty-one through twenty-five. Last year, it's come in over what we budgeted. Um, it's sort of hard to say with the way, um, there's a lot of unknowns right now in the economy, so it's, I think it's sort of hard to, uh, rely on having more come in than what our estimate is right now. Um, and then some good news with cyber, cyber charter schools. Uh, the auditor general report, when that came out recently, it, uh, it put a lot of extra eyes on cyber charter, and there's been, there's been a considerable push, it seems, to reform cyber charter. We don't know, obviously, what, what's gonna happen with that, but it could be, uh, a potential, um, could be potentially a good thing for our budget, um, if not next year, maybe the, the next year.
Yeah, I would suspect that would not impact until the following year, given how maybe we are in the cycle, and that this is already
Yeah.
the debate, like, when, there's no way they're gonna get a few things on six month time, no chance. So, uh, this is the time when the board can say, like, the versions we'd like to see for the May, uh, thing, and so for simplicity, I would like to see the four fifteen or three percent, because that's like a, kind of like the it does, it's a balanced budget, and it's an even number. What would, what else would people like to see?
I saw this morning that the, when the C P I came, report came out, that they're estimating cost of living for next year for seniors to be somewhere between two point two and two point four. So I'd like to see some, something along those lines.
Yeah, because that most affects us is that U C I, which would be coming in higher next year because of healthcare and stuff like that. I know that's not, it's not on the spend side for the taxpayers, it's on our actual, like, real cost increase side.
Uh, yeah, there's also, we don't know, well, yeah, what's gonna happen with the, um, assessed values, property values. Uh, looking back in the past, we've had it increase, uh, our revenue some years, and we've had it decrease our revenue other years, so it's
It depends on new construction and that appeals, right? It's always back and forth.
Yep. So you have the next slide here. So like you said, um, next, well, the May eighth meeting would be where we would vote on the proposed final, um, budget, and then June twelfth would be vote on the final. Yeah, if you, if you wanted to see before the May eighth, if you wanted to see those options you talked about, we can do that too.
You mean like the option that say Aaron proposed, the option that Corey proposed, look at those more closely next meeting?
I think I've gotten a sense from everyone that the, we didn't feel comfortable going above three.
Yeah.
That was, yeah. I mean, is anyone, what's happening?
I mean, do all, all of the options as far as the additional staff, will they all have the, all three additional staff, or will it break down
That's what this one.
the three, two. I know this one does, but is that?
I'm sorry.
If we're saying the only thing we wanna be elastic about is the capital project transfer, right?
Right. So keep the staff at three, no matter what. The additional staff at three.
That's the.
And vary the capital.
Yes, but not vary the teachers.
Keep the capital at the five hundred and look what choosing between the proposed decisions.
What are the three, like, the three positions?
So we've talked about what would be an additional special education teacher. The B C B A and the backfilling to middle school science with the student principal position. And there's rationale and just. And there's rationale and justification for each of those. Or we can be considering.
And that's what I guess my thing is, I would just like to see all the options, including the three additional staff, like.
Right, that's something.
That those, yeah, that those aren't the variable that gets messed with.
So that's the first.
So be, yeah, so that'd be the first slide where we're just looking at the.
Adjust.
Change to the transfer account.
But again, that's just.
How much do we have in capital funds?
Now, that's not earmarked already.
That's not earmarked, I would have, I would have to go get that number for you, I don't.
I have another question, you probably don't have the topic ready, you're, you're speaking as if five hundred thousand is sort of like the default, like the normal transfer. But like, like you've got these last few years of what the tax increase has been, has it been always five hundred thousand being transferred over the last couple of years?
We haven't budgeted a transfer in in the last few years.
It's always been there, it's a preliminary. And then it's one often laid aside for these other priorities. And then when all does settle next fall, we've taken the surplus. And moved it to.
So like this new year, the budget transfer came from our, our funding from the state was more than we thought. And so that left us with.
As a, as a general rule and the the free budget that comes out is you, the capital transfer was always set at about one percent of the overall budget. So it's, it's gone up gradually over time, but almost never does it wind up being the amount that we initially budgeted, because it's.
Okay.
It's where we.
If we were to say instead of five hundred, we only want to transfer four hundred or three hundred, is that out of the range of the of normalcy? There have been years body doing or?
It's just also like that keeping in mind of the very long list of things.
Pass this around so people can remember, just uh these are from a couple of meetings ago, but then we could see the, they're not, we didn't vote on all those yet, so they're not.
And the increasing tasks of.
Well, I would say that I. Yeah, we heard the rationale for the additional staff and I feel like those are things that we should honor that request for and treat the capital. Transfer as the more elastic area, but that's just my opinion based on what I heard.
How confident are we in getting applicants and a final candidate for the? I mean, I would say that that's the one that is very variable, I mean, the. So if that's the case, we could potentially shift that, those funds back to, you know, do a budget transfer. Um since we haven't had great success in the past to filling up position, so.
And one thing we, we never ever want to do or plan for, but. A, a capital expenditure that's kind of on the emergency side of things that eats into our general fund balance, such that we end up with. A slightly lower general fund balance at the end of the year than we start with is okay, because it's a justified expense. For example, if insurance hadn't covered when the Kelly floor exploded, the cafeteria replacement, that would have been like. That is a reasonable thing, you can say that's why general fund balance is spent, because we have to put more into capital. I'm not trying to put anything out there, but there are things that we know could just happen, right, like a roof.
When I ask this all the time, I forget every time, what's our, what's our fund balance currently?
Our capital projects fund balance?
No, general fund, it's like six point nine, six point six, something like that.
One was the last time, I think I asked this, the last time I asked, the series of questions, so forgive me, when's the last time we dipped into our fund balance?
Fifteen sixteen.
Okay, because I was gonna say, we haven't done it in a while. And that's the one that triggers the.
Oh, no, you just put it into the air because you know, if they don't pass in time, we're gonna have a fifteen, fifteen, sixteen situation.
For the basic education funding, remind me, where'd you come up with your number?
Uh it's straight from the state, they give us an estimate. Um not every month, but every few months, they come out with a new estimate for every school district.
And that current estimate reflects that increase in fifty-one thousand dollars.
Yep, correct, yeah. It was just a fifty-one thousand dollar increase from the last estimate to this estimate.
Is their estimate based on the governor's budget proposal or?
I think it's based on that and I'm not sure what other factors, but.
Okay.
They don't give us the formula.
How much of like our um budget right now is like factoring in potential inflation? Uh if inflation goes a little crazy.
Uh yeah, it's hard to put a exact percentage on that, I, I, because it's every. Or every uh section of the budget has sort of its own pressures that, yeah, different percentages of increase from year to year, so. Yeah, it's sort of hard to put a single percentage on that.
Are we budgeting sort of like standard expected inflation right?
What's interesting is that we budget the revenues on our investments, right, as a revenue. We, their income on our investments as a revenue source and for from piece left, which is like sometimes one point two five, sometimes. As high as like four, right?
Five, I think last cruise year was up, it was five and a half almost.
Right, but who knows going forward, so that's, that's another squishy piece and it's not very much money, but it's a squishy piece in the, in the budget.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I'm just thinking we probably want to be more conservative about that capital.
I think that we have.
Like danger, we have that room in case things get very expensive that we didn't anticipate, we don't, we can't anticipate, maybe they won't.
What did you budget as the income from our investments? What did, what percentage did you use?
Uh it was, it was less because I, I know that the market was.
Right.
Um I don't know if it all caught my head.
Probably like two and a half or three or something, really conservative.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want to give you the wrong information.
I know it's not the high, and when I looked at it last time, I know it's not the high.
Oh, yeah.
All right, what would other people like to see?
Yeah, we can.
This is with it, yeah.
Two point five.
Other good questions, thoughts?
I do really like this breakdown, like not just for us, but I think for the general public, because I do think it's very easy to get frustrated with. Taxes, obviously, and talking about increases and things like that, but I think breaking it down to. Look at, these are the main variables that we can play with, which is like new positions and capital funds transfers. Because so much of our budget is based on salaries, which are contracted, that's, we can't really do anything with. Um so I, I really liked the presentation of this and I think it made for, again, not just for us, but for the general public that might be pulling this up. I think it makes it really nice, so I really like that a lot.
All right, next up principals, finally. We get to speak, how are things? Okay.
John, the thing, go first.
Um so. There's a lot going on, um but a lot of these are just gonna be really cool accomplishments and some activities. Uh one of our Sun Tech students who is um active in HOSA. Won the, I had to look this up, the state HOSA anatomy competition. Um which, if your first question was, what is that, uh is also my first question. Uh but it's a competition uh that requires students to identify. Uh this is a direct quote from the website, anatomy structures by their main description and function, so. Uh she was number one in the state for that. Uh FBLA uh just got back yesterday. Um a lot of students placed in a lot of different uh areas, uh one student. Uh qualified for nationals, uh finishing fourth in the advertising competition. Um and tomorrow, in this very room. Uh first, so uh service first credit union will be in here doing um. Some work with kids in personal finance classes, so their kids have already filled out what their. Voice is gonna be, uh and service purchase is gonna come in, come in with the, the annual salary for the first year and they're gonna go to stations and. Select expenses, um find out about taxes and uh retirement stuff. Um once they get through that, they'll get to sit and talk with like a financial counselor about how all of that played out for them. Uh so that'll be all day tomorrow, um and right now we have five students that, uh I know we've talked about P M E A stuff quite a bit. Uh that's happening right now and there's five students involved in that as well, so one student orchestra. Uh one in the wind ensemble, one is doing percussion in the band and we have two uh for the choir. Uh and then uh the keeping clubs going to the Penn State Harbor today tomorrow. Into the, into the logical museum and they get to talk here, I talk by whoever runs the honey and pollen diagnostic lab.
That's a cool thing, tell me, is that funded by the building budget or did we ask for G D F money for something like that, because that's really extra cool?
That's a really great, great question, Mr. Popwood.
I would have to go back and look at what accounting code I used for that one. Uh I think that was building budget, so there are clubs that you get uh some. Different budgeted numbers, so pretty sure beekeeping had some number, some amount in there that they were able to use for that. Uh. But yeah, uh G D F. Um yeah, so high school's super busy with some of those events. Uh I do have a couple other event type things, but uh within the building itself, it's been very busy. With um scheduling, so all this week, we've had advisors. Uh working with students to basically support them in uh classrooms. So teachers have been able to kind of communicate like the portal, things that they could look for in the portal. Um then tomorrow, we have link crew going in one more time to our ninth grade advisor. Our, our advisory classrooms to have some more discussions just of like. From a student perspective of the scheduling process or things to be on the lookout for while they're scheduling. So that's a very beneficial piece um throughout this process, so the portal does close on Tuesday, April fifteenth. So there's some messaging that will go out, maybe ten minutes ago it went out. Uh just as like a reminder, there will be some other ones that do go out or just those reminders, make sure that students are. Getting those things situated for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, um and then also just some other events. Youth and philanthropy um is coming to a close here on Tuesday, so they are going to Danville, um that is. They had the opportunity to um. Receive various grants and they had to make some decisions on where to grant their money based upon the needs of the Lewisburg community. So that's always a very good exercise and process for students to go through, because it's just real world application of, of things that we're seeing on the day to day. And then we do have one more smaller conference for Model U N, uh they're going to Cornell. Uh for their smaller conference there, they're gonna be able to have some different committee sessions, which is another um. Real world application process for them to, to sit and discuss some different political uh pieces uh within their committees that they've been preparing for, so. Just the, the field trips, the, the things that are happening in the building, the connection that I think. Uh tied directly to uh outside these school walls is super valuable and, and teachers are continuing to showcase. Uh that application and finding those possibilities for students, which I think is really, really valuable. So I'll continue the theme of busy, uh we're definitely into a busy season. Uh sometimes I like to give you a lot of information about a few things, there's been so much going on, I'm just going to hit on all the amazing things happening. Uh we had transitions of Pennsylvania in, met with our eighth grade and seventh grade students about dating violence and. Um healthy communication as these students get to the age where they start to date. Um and it's great information for especially our eighth graders transitioning into the high school. Um Cooper Barrett from the Pennsylvania State Police visited with sixth grade classes and discussed internet safety and. Being a responsible online citizen, so again, really great information from our students. I think it's helpful to hear it from somebody else other than the teachers, having been there, I know I started to get toned out in about April. So it's good to have a different voice in and, and community members that have a lot of stake in, in our children. We had another successful career fair for our students, seventh grade students in business class this semester. Um around twenty different community members came in showcasing a lot of different careers, so we really appreciate them volunteering their time. And our students were amazing and going around visiting with um some of the different um. Volunteers that were there to share. At the Extravaganza concert along with the high school and Lindtown band, so that brought our band students together. And two of our special education programs had a recent visit to Pie Pizza in downtown Lewisburg. And um that went really well, and it is spirit week at the middle school, so leading up to our volleyball assembly, which is tomorrow. With the tradition of staff dominating eighth graders who all think that this is gonna be their year, um they fool themselves every year. I have to bring them back down to reality, um but it leads up to, to the volleyball assembly today was awkward family photo day. If you don't, if you don't follow the middle school on Facebook, you need to, because as soon as this reel is complete, it'll be amazing. Um but there were, it, it got awkward, um some sixth grade students asked me to join it for theirs, I was supposed to be grandma. The wake was green, I looked like a combination of clown and grandma and had a random um apron on. So it was awkward, but we're looking ahead to volleyball as- assembly, the last um dance slash fun night tomorrow night. All in one day, I can't wait, I'm gonna be tired at the end of the night, um P S S A testing coming up. Our eighth grade gifted students have a reception for the what's so cool about manufacturing competition that's in Danville in about two weeks. Um orchestra concert at the end of the month, art show, and that's all before our next board meeting, so it will be busy. It will stay busy right up until the last day of school, but we wouldn't have it any other way. Okay, continue the busy theme all the way down through, um just kind of where we live from now until um summertime. Um we had a kindergarten, first of our series of kindergarten concerts, um they're broken up and different than the other grade levels. Just to give a more intimate audience and a smaller um audience for our younger kids. So today we had um a group of two classes and a group of three, um tomorrow we have the remaining two classes. Um and it's just awesome to see the little kids up there and they're playing all the different instruments, they're involved in seeing them wave in the middle of performances and give thumbs up to parents. Some parents like shaking your head like stop chewing under shirt now, um but the kids just love it, um it's such a great time and today. Um I know Mr. Jim said, he set up, I think it was a hundred and forty chairs and we had probably thirty to forty people still standing for the last performance. Um so a huge turnout from our families, um grandparents, aunts, uncles and neighbors, that are just an awesome thing to be able to give our kids. Um that experience, so we're very excited about that. Um also that it kind of married into that event, we had earlier in the year, somebody from G D F gave money for um financial literacy. And to focus on kindergarten, um because it's never too young to save and I, I think it's just such a great seed to plant at that young age. Um so all of the kindergarten teachers received a copy of the book, I am Money. Um it teaches them how to earn money, how to save money, how to spend money wisely, um and then also how you can use, when you are saving your money. How you can use that to, to help others, um and kind of pay it forward and then I think. The more exciting thing of this, every um student was, has the opportunity to pick up. Um a ceramic green dragon bank, um I mean handmade, hand painted, they're unbelievable. Um Aaron helped deliver those to the school, um. One of the big challenges was then like, okay, now how do we get these home? Um it was after conferences where it's a big easy time just handing to the families. Um so we worked with the kindergarten team and thought this is a great opportunity here, we have high turnout. Um so we were able to send a letter home that families just stop by and pick it up and today, um out of the five classes that we had. Um performed today, I think we have ten banks left, um it was amazing to turn out and just being able to safely hand those to the families. Um anyways, the banks are amazing, um we heard such good things from the families. Um and just excited to teach their kids how to save and they can just practice saving immediately with their banks. Um next thing I want to share, we did uh for the first time at Kelly, we participated in um National Schwade. Um a couple of parents are here, let's go like, oh yes, I got this, everybody else, the guy, not sure what he just said. Um National Schwade, um it's the unstressed vowel sound in a word. National Schwade, it's the unstressed vowel sound in a word. So April seventh is chosen because the I in April is the schwah sound and the second E in seven has the schwah sound. And it's kind of, I think, just ties really nicely into all we've been working on with the science of reading at Kelly. So students created posters. They were given lists of words that they could choose from and created posters. They dressed in pajamas because that has the schwah sound in it. And when you're in pajamas, you're kind of unstressed and lazy, which we were hoping spread to everyone as an unstressed day to start off the week and it actually did pretty well with it. We had a parade so kids could parade around the school. Hold their posters, which anytime the little ones get to just walk around the school in front of everyone and have their friends cheering, it's a big deal. And then there was a poster contest as part of that as well. Where there was a child from each homeroom, they voted on the favorite poster and then they were in the third grade hallway. And as students walked by this week, they were able to deposit tickets in to show who their favorite was. And then the winner will be announced later this week, tomorrow. So just a nice new tradition incorporating that in. A lot of families now understanding what a schwah is. I'm sure it was Googled quite a bit over the weekend as they were trying to figure out what to do for, for Monday. But I think it's just another example of having Hannah in the role that she's in as a staff, all we're doing with the science of reading. And we've seen tremendous benefits in the classroom with our data and just another way to celebrate that and just to spread that, that message to all of our families.
With that, we'll turn it over to Hannah.
Okay, thanks. Just to let you know, the boys are very excited to take you all on tomorrow. We had to go get shirts for the whole team that match, so they're, they're taking it serious. But we had a career fair also that Evelyn Warner helped coordinate and bring in. We had like thirty-three booths that the kids did like a scavenger hunt going throughout. So it wasn't like they just were looking at things. They actually had questions that they could be, you know, used to ask anyone in any of the booths, which is really nice because some of our kids are very social and comfortable to talk to people they don't know. And then others are, you know, a bit more shy and don't know what to ask of them. But we had careers from like FBI Marines to financial institutions and Burger King and interior decorating and they, they were so I mean, every group that came out and, and the volunteers that came in, they were there. Some of them showed up at eight fifteen and they were there till two, two thirty and they really it was a great commitment from them and, you know, showed the kids just how important they were because they stayed all day. So that we could bring them in small groups so the kids could spend quality time and it wasn't this mass, you know, oh, all the fourth graders are all over the school. And don't have a lot of time to really talk with the individuals. So they were handling themselves very well. They all were very respectful and some of the conversations were comical and by midday, almost everybody was wearing a Burger King hat. So it was, it was cute. But they got to wear, like try things on, helmets and gear and they just, they, they did a really nice job. And I think it gave them an idea of like, wow, look at how many different careers I could potentially choose from someday. We also had, Mr. Lagerman had a pickleball tournament that was, I mean, every child had bought in because they all had the potential to be involved in it. They had a team that they played in class and then worked their way down and eliminated to the, the final four. Two from fourth, two teams from fifth, and then those two, you know, against each other. But the kids were cheering each other on, like they had, you know, their friends that they were cheering. And of course, most of the time they're trying to, they don't want the fourth graders to be the third graders, like can they do it, you know? So it was a great moment. All the teachers, the whole building was in there. And then maybe not as exciting as the Iditarod from last month and mushing, but I do really find a project that Colby Dur was working on. It was refreshing to see a lot of the time we, we get to this point in the school year and we're prepping for P S S A testing and the kids can kind of get like we have to hear a P S S A prep or everything, you know, one more time. They, they kind of tend to get that negative outlook. But the teachers are really doing a great job of trying to balance these projects that are pulling in all of the, you know, their grammar and conventions with writing and tying it to social studies. And but we has this class working on mystery stories that are kind of based around like the movie Clue. But he has it, the setting is the school. They have to say which classroom the crime happened, what was the crime? Come up with dialogue to interview the suspects and what was used to commit the crime and how will we go about solving the crime? Who's going to be the one that solves the crime? And they're, they're in the heat of it right now and they're going to finish it during P S S A testing and present. And he has them even adding sounds. They have to have sound effects when they're doing, presenting their story and they just were all so engaged and working well collaboratively in their classroom that I asked him, I said, when are you going to present these? I want to see, say a week and give them kind of a little break on those days of testing, so.
We are finally the citizens coming to the board on agenda items, which I know we typically do much earlier, but do we have any from online? Well, this is exciting. Middle school asbestos flooring abasement. I assume we're going to recommend the lowest better or do we like to serve other service better?
And do you want to speak to that?
I will. And Delbert stepped in tonight. If you do have questions, we found with the free bid process, the one that you see here that is the low bid. We worked today a little bit to make sure we can provide Delbert the amperage needed to complete the grinding process. Have been assured that we can work with it. So it is our intention to recommend.
Forster.
Forster, yes. For the job, three middle school rooms completed this summer.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Moved by this thing, this second by Dr. Graham. Any discussion?
Was there any specific thing that the one that was twice as much was going to do that? Like I'm all for going for the lowest one, but when it's twice as much, I'm always interested. Like what, what were they doing that?
I walked through with all three of them. I mean, the description, what they were going to do and the processes are all pretty much
The same.
The same. There wasn't really anything that they had mentioned that they were going to do that was anything different than any of the other companies that I walked around with. And once you get to twenty-five thousand, they need to do prevailing wage. So that would have, once they got to that point, they had to go a little bit higher. Other two were below prevailing wage.
Dr. Jawanski, yes. Mrs. Crowe.
Yes.
Ms. Lyons.
Yes.
Dr. Maddis.
Yes.
Mr. Fetter.
Yes.
Dr. Grant.
Yes.
Dr. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Hanos.
Yes.
Mr. He.
Yes.
Motion here. My next item, we talked about before is the Kelly playground asphalt replacement. Do I hear a motion to approve? Moved by Mrs. Crowe, second by Dr. Graham. Any discussion? This will also be completed this summer. And it'll be in conjunction.
With resurfacing. A long time coming.
Okay. Mrs. Cross.
Yes.
Ms. Lyons.
Yeah.
Dr. Maddis.
Yes.
Mr. Fetter.
Yes.
Dr. Graham.
Yes.
Dr. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Hanos.
Yes.
Mr. He.
Yes.
Dr. Devanski.
Yes.
Our next discussion is the new high school courses.
What would you like to do?
I'm fine. I think this will be great. I don't know. So twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six new course offerings are listed there. So just a couple additions. Algebra two, grade level nine is an addition for next school year. So just looking at the volume of requests that there are kind of with the math sequence where it was with the middle school, that would be our highest grouping of math students. So that's what we've done prior with geometry nine being the highest level of math students. So now we're moving that to algebra two, grade nine, so that's specific for ninth graders only. And then the geometry course will run just with the other geometry students in the bill.
Good question. What would a student take after this algebra two nine?
So there's a couple of options that a student would be able to take. So algebra two could go in the direction of advanced algebra and trig. They could go in the direction of college algebra, pre calculus with college algebra. They can look at like a comp sci option. Mainly we'd be looking at the pre cap with college algebra or the advanced algebra with trig and trig. So those would be the two directions. Creative writing two is just an addition to the creative writing one. There's been quite a bit of request for the opportunity for some more English. I think this is a great course for providing that outlet and providing students with a writing opportunity. The prerequisite for that is the creative writing one course. Similar to culinary arts two here, this is an extension to our faculty programming. So baking and pastry, culinary arts one, and then culinary arts two. So this provides students with some more opportunity to explore things that they're super interested in because if you get baking and pastry, baking and pastry is a little bit difficult to get as a ninth grader and sometimes even as a tenth. So by providing these greater options to culinary arts level two, that could then allow students to say, I want baking and pastries now, then culinary arts, then culinary arts two. So it provides some layers for students who are interested in the family and consumer science courses. Digital art is a new course within the art department. So with the second R T, we're moving from halftime to full-time position. This provides us an opportunity to add some art electives. So digital art will be the one that we do add at this point in time. And the prerequisite is graphic design at this point, just to ensure that there's not kind of like direct competition or overlap between those courses. So the graphic design would be first and then digital art and in the future, looking at, at some different options for some digital art options. I listed news in a changing climate here. It was listed on the twenty-four, twenty-five new course offerings. The only reason I listed it again is it did not run this year, just because there was not enough students enrolled in that section. So it's still new and hasn't been offered yet at this point in time. So I, I kept that there. And then personal finance is a change. So that's moving from the point two five credits to the point five credits. So that's why that's listed there as well. The descriptions that are listed there are the descriptions that you would find in our course curriculum guide. That students are able to, to read through and review for those offerings. Then at the bottom there, the, the pieces, the, the courses that are not offered for next school year would be the geometry nine, because that would just be geometry. High school seminar has been the point two five credit for ninth graders coming into high school. The reasoning that that is not being offered at this time is the personal finance moving to the half credit. So the point two five and the point two five blended nicely for some scheduling purposes, but now with the personal finance moving to the point five, that fills the, the schedule in that direction. And with the addition from some of our curriculum discussions that we've had this year, personal finance and surviving the real world have had quite a bit of overlap. So there's just so much similarity in that. And with personal finance moving to the half of half a credit, we felt like there'd be too much going on in both of those classes. So taking away the surviving the real world, which likely opens up the, the opportunity for culinary arts two as a section within the family and consumer science course. Because that's where surviving the real world was previously. Any questions regarding the new courses for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six?
Just a little typo thing. I think that word podcast is supposed to be about here and so it's vocal castle.
You know, it's interesting. I had to fix a couple of these for my PDF too. Yeah, I fixed it on the one online. Okay.
Anyway, otherwise, thank you.
Josh, thank you. And just a reminder perhaps, this is front end, what's going out to be offered. Mr. Papa Wiz and Mr. Skleski will be back to tell us what actually runs after portal and scheduling and potential want everything but can't make it all fit. That typically will happen as well. And he's mentioned personal finance. That is a state standard mandate to move to point five credit. So we are in line with the curricular reg that has come our way. Thank you for putting it together and sharing tonight.
Our next item is a proposed twenty twenty-seven trip to Japan.
I'm speaking briefly for Mr. Britton. Our policy says you should get first awareness of a proposed opportunity for extended travel. School sponsored field trip. Kevin Britton in our social studies department is hopeful that he's traveling to Japan this summer. And then wants to offer this forward for the following summer. And so in line with our policy, you have simply the first awareness that there is a potential for this. And he'll follow the components outline dinner policy and bring us much more if this starts to come to fruition.
Next is the board president's report. I'll keep my remarks very brief and, but Joe used the remainder of your time. Kathy and I had a meeting of the Green Dragon Foundation Board not that long ago. And one of the topics was the tennis courts, both public access and lights. And so something that came up was how much the community would like to see access, public access to many of our facilities, not just the tennis courts, tennis courts importantly, and that with pickleball lines is something we heard multiple times. Because that's a distraction at the courts on North fifteen, yeah. And so the other piece of that is if we figure out a system that allows public access to the tennis courts, what would that mean for the track or what would that mean for any other place that we've currently had to be careful about because we do have our playgrounds open, which has been nice because especially in the evenings and the summer. And so Vince, I hate to put you on the spot, but you drafted like a, a little draft of a policy for like what it would look like. It wouldn't be just the, it wouldn't be during school hours. It wouldn't be when we had competitions and stuff.
Correct. We got a community use guidelines, a draft form. We kind of came up with some of the grand applications that we ended up putting out there. And required some kind of community use guidelines. And so we've drafted a potential one that we could show you in more in depth in the near future. But yeah, not during the school day, in the evenings, after practices, after games, after matches and tennis court. But allowing them not to have food on the courts and limiting their time to an hour on the court, things like that. So we want to show that to more people. We actually have on the agenda for our wellness committee to let that group see it as well. But also want to show you guys in more depth to see what those are because there should be some things that we're missing, but we have got a nice draft started.
Yeah. Just to make everyone aware.
Can I suggest that perhaps the community relations group might be a good?
We'd love to pass that on to you, sure.
Would you, would you like to receive the requests regarding community use? Is that something that you, you all might want to tackle? I can pass this around a little bit. This is just a very early draft, but just so people can put eyes on it. Thanks. And then.
And my spot for a report, I do, like you, want Joe to be able to share some information he has for. some information he has for us. Mine was repetitive of many great things going on at every building. And so please, Dr. Graham, go ahead.
Okay, great.
Absolutely.
I need to be at the whiteboard. So I really took just five slides. This is found, it's brought to my attention by District Karen, Mr. Terrence Chek, about a article that was in the Daily Item on Saturday that people may have seen. And just some information that we felt it was important for the board to be aware of. And also some clarification of what was the way it was presented in the in the paper or in case there are questions. So the education recovery scorecard is a project out of Harvard and Stanford. It's education departments in February of twenty twenty five, so just the month before last. They released this public report called pivoting from pandemic recovery to long term reform at district level analysis. And they use school district level data on state required testing scores from two thousand three to two thousand twenty four to look at trends over the last, over that period, specifically focusing on twenty nineteen to present pandemic. On Saturday, the Sunday Daily Item published an article and the title of that article is data shows now schools testing below grade level based on this report and the concern that was brought to me. And thinking back here is that that article could, I believe, be misinterpreted to say that Lewisburg and other districts in her area are performing both below grade level, when in actuality it's that many are performing below twenty nineteen levels, but not necessarily below the grade level. So from that ERS report, this is the national graph just showing sort of the trajectory of schools on math. I know it was a very small bit, math on the left, reading on the right, going from twenty twenty, two thousand three to twenty twenty four. And so you can see that nationally, many schools sort of peaked in math and reading around twenty thirteen, twenty seventeen, something like that. And then where these dotted lines intersect is twenty nineteen, where a lot of testing kind of was put on pause with COVID. And so in looking at how scores have sort of picked up again, twenty two, twenty twenty two onwards, you can see a change here in in math and trajectory in reading as well. Now, the important thing for the article and then overall is that the the authors of the report attempted to talk about, you know, where students were doing relative to their grade level. They averaged data from third graders through eighth graders. So it's a pretty wide heterogeneous set of students. But to try to say in twenty nineteen, what was the national average of how well students were performing nationally related to where they were supposed to be grade level. And then goes further into individual districts, how they are performing relative to themselves in past years, but also at, you know, relative to the nationwide average and the grade level. So that shape is important. And it does show something that I think we should all be concerned about is that, you know, scores were pretty high and then were starting to come down before it would anyway and come down since then and have not popped back up yet here in twenty twenty five or twenty twenty four. Okay, so this is the specific graphs for Lewisburg district as presented in that in that report. So you can see our math on top and our reading on top. Again, math sort of was actually flat kind of going into twenty nineteen. Then there's that gap and then math scores have, you know, have come, have been down a little lower than they were in twenty nineteen. Though starting to go up again. The important thing that is not really clear from the daily item article that I want us to be clear on is that the axis here is showing that back in two thousand nine, when this graph goes to, we were somewhere between one and a half and two grade levels above the national nationwide average. And so, you know, we were performing above average, we're going up, continuing to go up. And so then this decrease here, yes, it is true that our our math scores came down from twenty nineteen. But we were, you know, already quite, you know, two grade levels above average. And so the fact that it's come down does not mean that our district is below grade level for math. And that would be very easy to come away with that from the whole article. Reading tells a similar, you know, slightly different story. Again, we see this kind of shape in twenty nineteen here is where it stopped. Our reading is actually sort of still in the bandwidth. So I think our question is really more like, why are we not back up where we were in twenty seventeen per se? But but this this word is actually slightly in a very, very small amount higher than twenty nineteen. So and again, like math, you know, since it's two grade levels above to three grade levels above is the range of this graph here. So we're somewhere around two and a half grade levels above average. You're not below grade level. We are similar to wherever we're talking. Okay, scroll. So a clarification, and I will say I should have said at the outset. So I've written a letter, not on behalf of this group, but just as a private citizen, to Mr. Bill Bowman, who's the editor of the Daily Item, with this information, just saying, you know, I'm not speaking for Lewisburg, but this is in what I think is the concern about this article. In the title and elsewhere, they insist that they use below grade level often as a pretext, when really they should have said below the twenty nineteen level, not grade level. The data show that broadly our scores, you know, many scores have declined since twenty nineteen. And, you know, for us, certainly in math, we have more work to do to try to get back to the level that it was. However, many local districts, including ours, were above grade level in twenty nineteen. And the fact that they've come down does not mean that we are now below grade level. Our recent scores, yeah, specifically, as of twenty twenty four, we're about two point three eight grade levels above the national average in math, two point four four grade level above the average in reading. And then a little. Okay, well, I had a graph that Mr. Shae prepared showing the eight districts that were covered in in this article. And they would show that, that's why I wrote it down. Four out of the, six out of the eight districts in our area are above the national average in math. And four of the eight districts in our area, oh, look at that. Okay, so here's what I'm talking about. Just real quickly, there's eight districts. There in Lewisburg is always all the way to the right. And zero is if we were at grade level or above or below. So, you know, the takeaways here are that, you know, particularly, that's math up there and reading down here. So yellow bars are twenty twenty four, blue bars are twenty nineteen. So our math bar has come down. And so and that's pretty consistent for almost every district, I believe. But but we are still, you know, considerably above grade level. And we share that distinction with Seals Grove, Daniel, and F1's report around Midwest and South. We're not the only ones in that positive region. So that is my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
I don't think we often talk about being two grade levels above the on average. That's a little break. That's very helpful. All right. Anybody else have any questions? I think we liked it. We're relaxing this. All right. Board liaison and committee reports. Let's talk about who met. So we have the inaugural meeting of the Community Engagement Committee.
This is Moser, Mr. Fetter, and I met with, well, met in the in the in a meeting to kind of set our agenda. And Mr. Keith Smalley met with us for forty five minutes or so with an issue that he has regarding a safety issue that sort of falls outside of our jurisdiction, I guess. It's not within our bounds, I mean, within our school district. But felt like maybe we could add our voice to the cause if it were to get to a place where that would be needed. So we have said that when he gets to the place where that might be needed, he can come and we can discuss that as a committee and then as a board and decide if we would like to lend our voice to that. So we did that and then discussed sort of where we wanted to go from there. And I think collectively decided that the pool issue seems to be one that's important to the committee and one that I think we can tackle with a little bit more direction or focus. And so we put together a list of relevant community members that we want to invite to a meeting and start the process of discussing what that looks like or what the needs are, how we can be helpful as a school district in that process. And we'll start there.
And did CSU have a meeting between last?
I love CSU meeting next week, so.
Suntech next week as well, but we did meet on Monday. There's a small committee who met for the hiring. We did our first round interviews for the director position, had a very robust conversation after. So looking to in the next few weeks, go into second round interviews. Also, it was mentioned earlier by the administration, but the Hosa Competitions and Skills USA, in the interviews, several of the candidates who work in career in tech currently in their positions had mentioned, you know, time after time, Suntech was announced as, you know, first place, second place, third place. And they all said, you know, when they were there, they were like, wow, you guys really stand out. So just good to hear people from all over the state recognizing that our students are achieving great things over there.
The policy committee?
We have not met yet.
Okay. Any of them I'm forgetting? Next up is the consent agenda, and we have the revised personnel report. So do I hear a motion to approve the incentive agenda with the revised personnel report?
A move.
A move by Dr. Mattis.
Thank you.
Second by Ms. Kraus. Any discussion? No, no discussion. What am I talking about?
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Mattis?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Dr. Graham?
Yes.
Dr. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Javonsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Motion here.
Thank you. Do you have any citizens' comments to the board on non agenda items? Nothing. And then we'll do director's comments. Maybe we'll start down. Vince, you didn't get a chance to really present anything tonight. Do you have anything you want to start with?
Very busy. The district, as the principals mentioned, we're looking forward to joining in on the volleyball volleyball tournaments tomorrow.
That's all I'll say.
I'd like to thank the communications committee for the time you're putting into these new endeavors. They sound wonderful. And thank you to Joe for your presentation and for reaching out to the to the, I mean, I know you weren't speaking on behalf of the board, but the sentiment that you're sharing corrects an error that you need correcting. So thank you.
Yeah, just want to thank the principals. Thank you, Mr. Populism, for the new course offerings. I have at least one kid at home who's very excited about creative writing two and very happy that that's coming to fruition. But yeah, no, thank you to everybody and thank you for your time.
Thanks for a better understanding of Schwade. We were, we were kind of befuddled at the kitchen table on that one. Thanks. And for all the work that everyone's doing. Thank you so much. And and well, I'll let Aaron.
Oh, yeah, everyone's, yes. Kathy's gonna say, oh, my God.
Yeah, I'm led for the Schwade explanation, the one I had at home. I was very confused when Schwade was. It was a lot of letters. That did not make sense of how they all went together.
I just thought L ball words, like football.
I got started with like double letters. Yeah, I didn't, I had no idea how pajamas and April were both like, I was like, they don't even sound close to this thing. So that was really fun. Yeah, that's really, I don't know if I can ask.
Thanks to everyone for being here tonight and your updates. And I just wanted to give my final little shout out to our local giant for supporting our roundup problem or problem roundup program through and all the shoppers who rounded up and you checked out. We have about fifty four hundred dollars coming back to the district that will help families with unpaid balances from the cafeteria to help settle those up. So thank you to giant.
Sorry.
So sorry. My turn.
Yes, your turn.
Okay.
Busy was the word and you hit at least two dozen of what I wrote, but that's okay. There's more. Vince has been busy this week, not only in the areas he mentioned, but it's necessary each year to train on the state testing protocols. And it starts with the district coordinator, training principals, who in turn train teachers on the necessary ways in which we hand them out, account for them when they come back in. It is important to stress, it is a state decision to move totally to online next year. We are trying some online this year as a means to step toward that. Vince has been busy not only preparing for volleyball, but doing some other things as well. Kyle, the effort to bring the budget information tonight, greatly appreciate your work on our behalf. Michael Jones shared with me the giant contribution back to us. That's great. Very appreciative of that. We finished our induction program with our new staff for the year. And just as soon as you finish trying to bring new staff in, it's time to go out looking for next year's new staff. And we have that process underway as well. We've mentioned the track resurfacing that will get started this next week. But happily, we have played field hockey on the new turf surface twice this week. Hooray for that. And finally, yes, PSA and the wonderful treats we are enjoying tonight. Many thanks to Abby and her committee and the organization that realized they've done lots of teacher appreciation, but had not brought something your way and something our way as the board and were certainly grateful and have been enjoying that this evening. Thank you.
What do you have, Corey?
I also wanted to thank Kyle for his report tonight. It was informative and pleasant news, which is not always the case when we get to this point in the year. And Joe, I enjoyed your report as well. I happened to read that article on, so that you brought some more insight to it that your your right was not obvious.
I also want to express gratitude to the PSA. I really liked the Lackawanna College presentation. I think that's a a nice move for, especially sometimes kids can't get the courses that they might want to take during the regular year or doesn't, whatever it might be. And so with something like, you know, maybe it's just an intro to computer science class or something like that, right? I really like the idea that someone could spend a couple hundred dollars and figure out if that's something they want to pursue versus making that decision later and more expensively. So that's, I really like that. And then an FBI person is going to nationals in marketing. Who is it? Oh, fantastic. That's spectacular, right? I think that's all I had. Okay, I can take a motion to adjourn.
Delude.
Move for Ms. Kraus. Second by Ms. Lyons. All in favor, say aye.